That's the case, yes. I'm not sure if that... There's a residence there as well? Okay, it's a residence as well.
Okay, so I think that the requirement is fifty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty and it's nineteen thousand six twenty. Because I'm combining the residential and place of worship.
I don't think it works that way. I don't think that you add the two together. I think that it would be the largest lot area.
No, not according to the code. The code says that if you have two principal uses, then you have to meet the bulk requirements for each.
That's... You know your code better than I.
Total for the residential and the place of worship is forty... Fifty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, and what they have provided is nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty square feet.
Roughly forty thousand.
Roughly forty thousand, yeah.
Three times the coverage.
One-third of what's required.
Okay, so this is... I guess this parlay's into a question of mine. The structure's already there. The structure's already built. If, depending on how the board goes, say the board says no, it doesn't grant the wa... I mean, the structure's already there. It's kind of like a cart before the horse, chicken or the egg.
There's a use that's right there.
Yeah.
And they're looking to change the use, which then adds...
Well, actually, they're already using it. That's why they're here. They're here because of the violation, because they were using it. And they were ordered by the justice to come before the board and make it right.
And my advice to the board, because we're not dealing with an applicant other than a religious use, there are different rules. So you can't pretend that they're the same rules because the law of federal and state law both say there are different rules. You've incorporated those different rules into your code, giving you the ability to follow the federal and state law by waiving things that would essentially deny the use if they show that it's a substantial burden to do so. And my advice to you is that with such things as lot coverage and lot area on a building that exists, that to deny the waivers would essentially deny the use and therefore would be a substantial burden on their religion.
So that's with the lot area, but with the lot coverage, isn't there elements that we could incorporate to improve things such as...
Coverage doesn't include the parking, right?
No, no. This...
He's asking about lot coverage.
Yeah. I mean, the lot area is a lot area, but the lot coverage...
Lot coverage would be, I mean, I'd have to look at the definition yet, but I think that's impervious area. That would be your full impervious area, just a couple of examples.
Yeah, if the lot coverage includes impervious area, then I would say defer that because that would be impacted by the parking submission that would be made, and the same with the lot width and setbacks that may involve parking issues. And so, Steve, if you could also address... If you could also address the issues of lot coverage and lot width and setbacks...
In the next submission, you're saying?
In the next submission, dealing with how much impervious surfaces, and that impacts with respect to landscaping there.
Right. I have a feeling, you know, lawyers shouldn't try to be engineers or architects, but I have a feeling that those things are not likely to change. I understand that you want to have a submission to confirm that. I think that all that is going to be shown on the next set of plans is here's what the parking has been shown to be, here's what it is, those are the impervious surfaces, and what will likely be shown in the next submission is here is why we cannot put in landscaping, because if we do that, we're going to yet shrink further what is already shown on the plans. That's my understanding.
What I would propose that you do, and it's up to the planning board as to whether they ask you to do this, what I would propose that you have an alternate there, providing to the best extent that you can, some sort of landscape buffer that may reduce some of the parking.
That's fine.
But maybe only minimally, and the planning board would, on balance, rather have some landscaping there and say one last parking spot.
That is something that we certainly can do, and if that's the board's pleasure, we'll certainly be happy to provide an alternative.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. So we'll leave coverage and parking out of this discussion for now. So just on lot area and then setbacks. Can we do setbacks in general? Do we have to do setbacks there?
Setbacks wouldn't include the parking lot. Yeah, you could do the lot width and setback deficiencies now because it wouldn't be affected by any alterations in the impervious soil for parking.
The setback is based on the structure, not...
Rick, if there's a denial of these waivers, they have the CBA as a recourse. Is that correct?
That's one path they could take. And the rest I would rather advise you in an attorney-client confidential meeting to further elaborate on your question. And we can do that after the meeting if you want.
I think in general, they have to provide more information to us. I don't know if we should keep pushing on general waivers.
Looking for impact from everybody.
I'm a grammar.
Okay. Everybody... So we want to wait till our next submission then?
That's fine. Thank you for that. We understand what you're looking for. And just so that the record is clear, the extension that would be needed in order to bring this not to the next meeting, but to the following meeting, so that we can get the submission in, and this can be scheduled not for November 20, but I guess the next meeting.
Right. Steve, I hate to interrupt you, but I think that the waiver at this point in time needs to be open-ended because it depends upon when you're submitting something as to when it's going to go on.
We will get...
So if for some reason you now submit something, and then you believe that the board is dallying with respect to its response, you could also... You could always withdraw that extension.
I don't prefer to give open-ended extensions. I never have, but I'm certainly happy to do this in a way that is cooperative and reciprocal. So the board wants to defer this until it gets the next submission. We will get the next submission in so that there's no doubt that this can come up on the board's second meeting after today, and I will certainly extend the board's time to that meeting without any difficulty at all. If anything else comes up and we have to take it up at the next meeting, we'll take it up at the next, you know, the next meeting when we're on the agenda.
The Fourth of December. We're not dealing with any holidays, right?
I don't believe so. Is that Hanukkah? I think Hanukkah's later this year. No, it should be okay. Oh, I appreciate that.
Is that okay?
So there's a couple of issues that have to be addressed because I don't think that to protect the board, we can be so fine with respect to the extensions. If, in fact, we say that your extension is only granted to the December 4th meeting, and then the submission comes a week before that meeting...
No, it will not. It will come...
Well, things can happen, right? And the other thing is that if there's a snowstorm and the December 4th meeting doesn't occur...
If... Look, if we don't get the submission in in time, then that's on us. That's not on this board, and I will put on the record that if we don't get the submission in in time, we will commit to granting an extension that would cover when the board would be able to take this up, knowing your two-week deadline. And if there's a snowstorm, we'll deal with the snowstorm at that time. Nobody on my end is going to turn around and hold the board hostage over a snowstorm. But those are, I don't think, are things that we need to address now. Let's just do this in the normal course. Those are the normal things.
Well, you've answered it because you've given the leeway to the board with respect to the issues that would normally come up.
Okay.
So, Rick, you're okay with...
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, absolutely. All right, so we'll get your submission. We'll see you on the Fourth of December.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, you know what? We got to do the AF. Or can we hold off on that? Should we do the AF now or...
It's up to you. I mean, you've had it before you...
Oh, it's up to the board. You guys want to do the AF now or no? Okay.
Say that again?
They... We'll hold off to the next...
Okay.
Homeland, review and discuss site plan, special permit application of a proposed new wireless telecommunications facility located on approximately seven point seven two acres and eleven Avon Road in Central Valley. Said property is known as Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section 226, Lot 1, Lot 31.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder on behalf of the applicants. As you may recall, last month, the board closed the hearing, left it open for public comment. We were pleased to receive Mr. Musso's technical memo. In response to that, we did bring some samples, including a color sample, which includes two brown colors and a faux tree branch. On the flip side of the color sample is the fresh galvanizing. This typically patina is to a darker gray color over time, which we think is a very good color. But in this particular location, our preference would be the dark brown, given the location of the facility is shown in the various visual renderings compared to the tree, which we believe would add additional bulk at this particular location, or some of the lighter colors, which we think may stand out a little bit more. Yeah, we brought it on an actual piece of the metal. That's one of the cover plates on the pole, so that way it's actually on the material that it would be.
That would be the actual color, like...
So we have a dark brown, we have a light brown, the galvanizing on the other side would patina to a darker gray over time. But that's the dark brown color.
And as far as branches go, this is one of the shorter branches that would be at the very top of the tower.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Yeah, Chairman, members of the board, thanks for having me back. You're in receipt of my tech memo of November 3rd. Laid out some recommendations and recommendations at the very end. I'll prompt you for questions, but just wanted to go through the sections and the analyses that were included very quickly. Gave an overview of the application, 110-foot monopole. There's two options, I think, that are on the table. The applicant you hear prefers a conventional monopole, which you've seen in the photo simulations and on the drawings. We asked for a stealth tree monopole, which you've seen on the revised drawings and in the additional photo sims. I included some of those in my tech memo for comparison. I hope that was helpful. I talked about the application filings. Our determination is that with the initial setback in June and the supplement in September, including testimony you might hear tonight, we feel that the application filings are complete and in accordance with the code. I spent a lot of time reviewing coverage and capacity, or, as it's now termed for places like the Village of Woodbury, coverage capacity together and the need for the site. We looked at the RF emissions data and the report that was filed for that. They did look not only at Verizon and the six proposed panel antennas and the frequencies that they're licensed to operate on, which is 4G service, by the way. There's no 5G being proposed as part of this application. 5G, as you've heard me testify before, is not here yet in the Village of Woodbury, but the RF emissions were described in my report. They made a scenario for cumulative. This is speculative, but if the monopole is approved and built with Verizon at the very top, if there's four collocators altogether, meaning AT&amp;T, Sprint, and T-Mobile, the commercial providers that service Woodbury are co-located, who knows how that will play out, but that's a conservative scenario. They're under 4% of the health-based maximum permissible exposure limit. So that would be for areas at the site, areas in the perimeter of the site outward up to 500 feet, and then it's universally understood that emissions would decrease beyond that afterwards. We had some questions on the alternate sites that were looked at, and there's been some additional information that's been provided. There was eight sites that were looked at altogether. My report talks to them a little bit. The supplement that was provided, I think, talks about the outreach to those property owners. Their supplement and my tech memo also talks about some of the constraints. I think if you look at maps of the area, you'll see wetlands, surface water bodies, and some physical constraints of those properties. The visual analysis I noted, I included an image in the tech memo of a PlanView Viewshed map that shows visibility, basically just using desktop software, and then looks at a different shading with regards to vegetation, trees, and structures. Colocation potential I spoke about. At first, 110-foot pole doesn't seem awfully tall, looking at some of the existing monopoles in Woodbury. The Marlane monopole and also the cemetery, the Highlands monopole, are much taller. Those are in excess of 150 feet. Your code requires a 110-foot height, which the applicant's proposing. We were curious if this is constructed, if this is approved, what the potential is at lower heights. So we do feel that colocation would be likely, given the situation of the monopole along the New York State thruway. We have some additional radio frequency information that was provided to support that. There are some notes on a structural assessment and some recommendations, and then last, a little comment on wetlands and cultural and ecological resources. We feel that the due diligence has been done by the applicant, outreach to both the New York State DEC and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services for potential rare or threatened and endangered species, and also to the New York State Historic Preservation Office, as is required in terms of any areas of direct or visual influence. None were noted by New York State Chipo based on their review. And finally, there's several recommendations that I include at the end of the memo. So I think that's a summary in short of what you guys have in front of you now.
Does anybody have any questions? So, Rick, this... I know we kind of touched base on it, so where does this leave us right now?
The application is complete. You've heard the contours of the review by Mr. Musso. Dennis, I think, may have some comments. We have to check on one issue with respect to the water-water permit. But you also have a draft neg deck that you can vote on. The big issue for you is what do you do now? If you feel, and asking more questions, and comfortable, if you feel comfortable that this is at the stage where you want to authorize me to draft a resolution, then we'll draft a resolution for you to continue discussion and vote at your next meeting.
And that resolution would include whether it's a tree colors...
Yeah, you would tell them what your final decisions were. They would then have to submit some plans that would conform to that if it hasn't...
I think we already did that, so we included both options on the plans.
You would have to identify which option that you are doing, assuming that it's one of those options, so that the plans could be identified properly in the resolution. And tell me about any conditions that you want with respect to this, if there are any. But I think it's getting near time, if not deep time, for you to make a decision.
Sorry, Dennis, I didn't mean... Thank you, Rick. I didn't mean to seal over you. Sorry about that.
No, no. Actually, we gave a report last time, and we had received all the materials that were necessary and for your review. We went over our report, I think it was October 2nd, reviewed those aspects. We talked about the height of the pole, also the location. You had a similar application not too long ago about concerned about ice fall, and you had a sign that was erected on it. I mean, these are things that we've gone over already. As far as the bituminous path to the site, it blocks the access to an existing propane storage area, but they advised that they would supply that by hose, and they could do that, and it was sufficient for their needs. Simply noted that. It was referred to your ISOs. You received some comments on September 3rd. There was no problem with that. They provided additional information on emergency contact signs, and we recommended that be part of your action. As far as the wetlands permit and the wetlands issues, the wetlands permit was filed. They did file a permit. It contained the information required in the code. The applicant issued a statement of compliance with the code. The restrictions on the lot making this, it's a minor disturbance. The adjacent wetlands area are unavoidable, unless you have any other concerns. Administrative items, I think that we recommend that you approve that permit, right? As far as appearance, the last thing we left you with is appearance, and now they've come in with some modifications to the tower to try to make it more aesthetically pleasing, and that's up to you whether, in fact, they have met that burden. And so I said I had nothing to say, but then I took up serious media time and repeating some of the items that we talked about previously.
Did you say we have to vote on the freshwater land permit, or is that through the Building Department?
That's going to be... That would be encompassed in your action.
Anybody have any questions for Dennis? I'll do the easy part first. I'll make a motion that we accept the negative declaration, notice of termination.
I second it.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
So that was four ayes and one no. Correct, Sandy? All right, now here's the part. Got to pick one of the... Yeah, one of the options that they gave us. Either the standard monopole or the stealth monopole in the dark or tan color.
Or the...
Galvanizing.
Galvanizing.
And then I believe also was the option of the breakpoint...
That's in there either way.
Okay.
That's... Yeah, that's in there either way. That's on the plans and in the structural report.
The hinge point.
Yeah.
So how's everybody feel? We got to make a decision, so I mean...
Brown. I'll go for the brown.
We normally lean towards the galvanizing, but in this particular setting, when we looked at it and we've done the brown in the past, we thought the brown was the more appropriate color.
Dark brown.
The dark brown.
Yeah, I don't... Did you guys do the photo renderings with the... Was that you? Someone did photo renderings where they popped the stealth power into the pictures.
Yeah, it's in there, and it was in Mike's report as well.
I would say the dark brown with the...
Dark brown.
Dark brown with the tree.
Or with the tree?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. So the tree color... The tree color is actually, we recommend... Vincent's going to kick me for this. He actually has a color in the car that we think works better with the tree branches. Could you just give us one second to grab that?
Give you 30 seconds.
Okay. And I told him not to bring it in because I...
God, your tree's falling down.
But the colors, they call it a thunder gray, and it actually works better than the dark brown, we find.
Would you say it looks better, you mean it just looks better?
It looks better. No, it looks better. It doesn't...
Basically, trees over time, they're not really brown. They really fade and they turn gray. So this is actually from the site we're building right now in town called Pleasant, and this would be the color of the tree.
The pole itself. And that's what's recommended by the manufacturer.
Yeah.
The branches go, they fit in there?
No, no, not into... No, this is actually a bolt from the bottom. It's the color of the tower. The attachments are different. Yes, it does attach into things that stick out on the top of the tower.
I think the critical part is having that tree exist around the pole. That's that part, right?
Yep.
Oh, then we have that color pole. So if you do that color, then you feel it's better.
We think that color is better, yeah. Without the branches, we would say the dark brown. With the branches, the thunder gray is the better color.
But now, is that still a match?
Yes.
It is. Right now, it's a little more shiny. This is brand new. I just picked it up on the site today. It'll fade over time a little bit, too, but you can tell it's not as shiny.
And now there's a cell tower missing a bolt.
Yeah, we're familiar with the thunder gray, actually, in Mount Kisco. I think working with Rob Gordioso's office. It's a two-toned. It's a very different situation. What I like about that, there's a little bit of greenish hue in there at times, and trees are not brown. They're actually gray, right? I mean...
Plus, you know, the actual tower gets too dark, it may stand out more. But subtle like this, you won't see the pole as much, but the branches kind of tie it better.
So I think the question is, number one, the configuration, it sounds like, and maybe to pole it, would be a stealth tree configuration versus conventional, and then number two would be the color of the pole itself. There's several other conditions or recommendations within the tech memo as well, but I think those are the big aesthetic items.
Yeah, well, so stealth pole, stealth tree pole.
Stealth, yeah, yes.
And is everybody changing their mind to the gray?
Thunder gray.
Under gray?
Under gray.
Okay. Yeah. Now, is this going to end up looking like a tree? I see one on Route 17 past Ramsey, and it looks more like a tornado with a funnel big on the top and narrow on the bottom. I mean, it looks very bizarre-looking.
Well, we've never done a tower with the top bigger than the bottom.
Yeah, we do just...
The taper isn't dramatic. Either it's not going to be like a triangle. It'll be a very slight taper, but the bottom will be bigger than the top. That's why I brought this, to say that these are literally from the top to the top. You know, as you go down, it's going to be six, eight-foot branches, and then eight, 10-foot, and then 10, 12-foot, and then some 12, 14-foot. So it does taper out. I'm definitely not importing it like that.
Can you bring them?
But the way that we did the photo simulation is intended to be what we...
Yeah, when the applicant responded, a couple of things that I like. There is taper shown on the drawing, the new cross-section. They also continue the branching well down into the tree line, I think to 40 foot above grade. If I could just suggest what we did at a prior cell tower application, this is the one at First Avenue that's under construction right now. At that time, when that was approved, it was really kind of the final night where you guys hadn't seen photo simulations of a stealth tree, but there was some discussion. I provided some examples in my tech memo on it. Here, we have examples, and you had them ahead of time, of the stealth tree. We spent a lot of time at the building permit phase of the project after approval to work out all those details. And I think if a stealth tree is approved here, I think we're more than halfway there because they do have some helpful things about taper and density. I think those details can be hashed out, though, further at the building permit level.
And we're fine with that because typically what we do is, once it's approved, then we could order the tree, which in turn, the manufacturer will give us the design drawings, which in turn, we can submit. They could be reviewed. If there's any comments, they could be changed before we actually order the product because it's a specialty-made order. But as Mike said, I think we've already... We already showed you, quote-unquote, "the Cadillac of trees" and the density, the branching configuration, the length and height of the branches going as low as they are. So we're pretty comfortable with what we've already shown.
That's a silly question. Like, if a branch falls off, how would you... Pretty big deal if a branch falls off, but it's...
But it's, when they come out to inspect the towers, is that something they look at to make sure the branches are all?
Yeah, they do.
Stuck there.
You know, as you can see here, like these branches come off, you know, but when they do go out there to inspect them, if there's something broken, you know, generally, these things don't just snap for no reason, but if there's something broken, that would definitely be picked up during an inspection, because you would see it on the ground. And, you know, if it got to the point where a bunch of branches are falling off, the site would no longer comply with the resolution, because the resolution would require it to be a site that's designed to satisfaction with the building permit. And if the branches fall off, that is no longer their satisfaction, so we would be in compliance. We would have to figure it out.
Like, what's the life expectancy on the foliage?
More to.
No, I'm just curious. You know, it's 100, it's 100 feet in the air. It's, you get 60, 70 mile an hour winds. Do these things get ripped off, and all of a sudden, we've got a?
They do. They are in need of maintenance.
I mean.
One of the recommendations that we put in is a specific maintenance plan.
Okay.
So the appearance should be maintained within reason, as the building inspector could determine. Taper density, density is the thing you're, you're talking about. Over time, that could get degraded with the branching falling off, not, not the full branching, but the fronds falling off. It could fade. The colors sometimes fade over time a little bit. So a site in Rockland County, working with Crown, another tower owner, it's been eight or 10 years, and there was some need for maintenance that the building inspector found at that time. So a maintenance plan, I think, and the way the code is written about recertification, that's an important thing that they could look at with the stealth tree option. So I think there's controls on it, is what I'm saying.
I just, you know, would hate to see a tree go away, and all, six years from now, it's, it looks like it's a tree in the fall in the middle of the summer.
Yeah, listen, yeah, I, I agree totally, so.
That defeats the whole purpose, though.
Well, so do we, really. Because every tower I build is really an example of what my company does, so I don't want any of my tower to deteriorate to that point either, because then how am I going to go to the next municipality and tell them I want to build a tower if after eight years I have this other one to that day? So, you know, we're open to reasonable maintenance requirements.
Yeah, we didn't have any objections to any of Dennis's or Mike's comments, as far as the conditions of approval.
Michael, when is our recertification for all the cell towers in Woodbury due? Isn't it a five-year cycle?
Yes.
Do you know when, when the next cycle's coming up?
Well, it would depend on the approval date and.
I think we combined them. We changed it so that we didn't have to do it one at a time.
We haven't adopted that yet, right? Those are, those are in the pending?
I thought we adopted that particular one previously, that.
I wasn't aware of that.
Comprehensive one.
Though that brought the old ones up to the certain, though it brought the old ones up to a consistent.
This will roll into that cycle.
Right. I believe we changed, but if not, it'll be changed soon. It used to be that every single one had its own five-year cycle, which made it tough to, to keep track of. So they're adopting one in which there is a five-year one, and you just, so the, you may put it up, and you may be subject to an inspection in a year.
Got it.
But, and then the next one will be five years later.
Understood.
Yeah, that's, that's something that's, that is a good question.
And if you could just put that in the resolution, it would just help us to be able to track and monitor it.
All right, it will be, yeah, with the, with the code.
Yeah.
But at the Marlane Tower, for instance, there was four carriers, and one, of course, went on when that was built at the very top. And then there was a year or 18-month or another year separation. So the board was, or the building inspector was seeing these recertifications. So as Rick says, it's smart for a location to roll that in altogether, and that way, everybody's, everybody's on the same page when to do it. Five-year would be the duration after construction within five years.
Thank you.
I think it's, so who's, who's going to offer the motion to, Dennis? Oh, sorry. I think you said something, sorry.
No.
Just hurt you both.
Just stretching.
So we need a motion to appro, to have our attorney.
Draft a res.
Draft a resolution of approval for a.
Thunder gray monopole.
Thunder gray stealth monopole.
Stealth is the tree, right?
That's what we call a monopine versus a monopole, the pine tree, monopine.
So it'll be a monopine.
Stealth tree monopole.
Thunder gray monopine.
Thunder gray.
Stealth tree monopole.
So we need a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It would be 3-2.
So Richard, you were not in favor?
Yeah, aye, no, no, aye, aye.
Just to confirm, this is a five-person board, correct?
Yes. So the resolution.
Who said no?
Sandy.
So the resolution passes.
And there was no county planning board objection, correct?
Excuse me?
No county planning board objection?
I don't know if they replied.
I believe we discussed it last meeting.
I don't think we got anything back from the county.
I got the county letter.
Is that, is that, is this county instrument?
Yeah.
So this is the situation on 239. My memory was just refreshed. The, it was previously referred to the county without an EAF. They responded they are not going to consider it to be a proper application for their report until an EAF was submitted. We resubmitted on October 1st, 2019 with the EAF. Therefore, as of this date, 30 days has passed, so you're able to, you're not voting on it tonight, but you would be able to vote on it tonight. Now, if the GML 239 report comes in, I forget the exact wording of the statute, but I think it's two days prior to your vote, then you have to consider it, even though it's past the 30 days. So we'll just have to wait and see what happens if the county comes back with anything. For instance, if they needed a, if they had a mandatory requirement that wasn't in here, and the, the board didn't want that mandatory requirement, and they needed a super majority, there would be a difficulty. But if there wasn't that problem, and the votes remain the same, they came back with either mandatory requirements that weren't a problem or other suggestions that they would either follow or not follow, they could take a vote at the next meeting. But to override, if, if a report came in, I think it's two days or 72 hours, there's, there's some timeframe prior to the vote which they could issue a late report, in essence, and it would still have to be considered by the board.
So the vote of the board tonight is not the controlling vote?
That's correct. This was just to authorize us to prepare a resolution.
Could, could we have a vote this evening?
No.
On the issue?
No. And the reason we wouldn't is that, and my, my advice to the board is that they should not do that, because there are the contours of the resolution by which they would determine whether or not they agree with that. So we would craft the resolution. I would have to be looking through Mike Musso's requirements to see what would be and what would not be conditions, and fashion those conditions, and it would only be based upon that, that the board would decide whether or not to vote. We, depending upon how I craft it, you have, may have more people voting in favor of it or less. So it really isn't final at this point in time. It's just three. A majority of the board has decided that it has reached the stage whereby a resolution ought to be presented to them for their consideration.
And what's the date of the next meeting, please?
November 20th.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
You can put it on.
Hold on, did everybody get the email from Gary Thomasberg about IBW?
Yes.
The movement of those handicap spaces?
Yes.
Does anybody have a problem with IBW moving those spaces now?
If you want to authorize it as a field change, we'll do it as a field change. That way, you don't have to do anything further.
You want to just, you need a motion for that, or?
Probably best.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the field change, the two handicap parking spaces for IBW.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close. Come on.
Rick, did you want to have a discussion about some issue?
Yes.
What?